I call this meeting of the Northwest Independent School District to order at 5:30 PM. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open League Act, Texas Government Code 551. The Board will now convene in closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Chapter 551, including Sections 551.071, Consultation for its Attorney, and 551.072, Real Estate Matters, 551.074, Personnel Matters, and 551.076, Security Devices or Security Audits. We will now reconvene our regular meeting, and we will begin with the invocation and pledge. Dr. Faust?
Good evening, guys. Please rise and join me for the invocation, followed by, please remain standing, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to do so, please join me and bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you humbly, Lord, just grateful this evening. We want to thank you for our students, that we have had the opportunity to serve this school year. We want to thank you for our faculty and our staff that have given themselves to inspire our students and to equip them. We want to thank you, Lord, for the class of 2023, our seniors that were sending out into the world, hopefully inspired to be lifelong learners and equipped to take on new tasks and new accomplishments. And, Lord, we thank you so much for the rest of our students. We pray that they are kept safe this summer as they go out, and that you bring our students and our staff back safely to us. We also pray for the safety that just the class of 2023, we commit them to your hands, Lord, as they go out into the world. So, all of these things, we ask in the Lord's name. Amen. Okay, I'd like to invite to the podium this evening two students from Schluter Elementary School. We've got Zoe Wickersham, a third-grade student. Come on up to the podium there, and I'll introduce you as you come up. Her parents are Brian and Lindsay Wickersham. Her favorite subject is writing, or two subjects, writing and rap. And she likes to play with her dog and her brother, just play. She enjoys that. And she loves to go to Disney, Disney World, and go camping with her family. Out of the Disney World is she's campaigning for a journey to Disney, or she loves events. Also, her proud principal, Casey Williams, said Zoe is kind, caring, and a leader among her peers. She is a friend to everyone and models what we mean when we say we take care of each other in our Schluter pledge, sorry. She's been deemed an honorary office lady and can often be found helping in the front office even after school. We're so happy to have Zoe as part of our school. So, thank you, Zoe. And you've got a partner here, Kylie Harden. I'd like to invite Kylie, two second-grade student at Schluter Elementary. Her parents are Watt and Ashley Harden. And our favorite subject is science. And she says she loves science because she gets to watch the life cycle of butterfly in class. That's pretty awesome. She likes to draw and play, and she's also a dancer and a singer. And if we can teach you some acting, you can be a triple threat someday. So, that'll be pretty exciting. Ms. Williams says that Kylie models every day what it means to be a Schluter Spur. She is an incredibly hard worker, and she's considerate and giving towards her classmates. Kylie always has a smile on her face, and Ms. Williams can count on her to lead the way among her peers. Schluter is better because Kylie's one of our students. So, we're so glad to have both of you here this evening. I look very tall this evening. Would y'all lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the glory of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one entity visible.
Awesome. Would you guys stay there for just one second? Dr. Simpson, our school board president, is going to walk down and give you a token of our appreciation. Folks, if you guys want to be seated, you can. Thank you. And I want to say thanks to the parents for supporting these kiddos. And Casey, are you out here somewhere? Where's our proud principal? There she is. Okay, she made it. So, thank you, guys, so much for being with us this evening.
We will now move to recognitions. Mr. Tosi?
Good evening, Dr. Simpson, Dr. Faust, members of the Board. At this time, I'd have Dr. Simpson and Dr. Faust join us up front. As you can see tonight, we have a full house of a lot of recognitions. And we'll begin tonight with recognition from a group that has prepared itself for future success by earning a state license. This year, nineteen Northwest ISD seniors have earned their cosmetology license from the state, marking the first time in district history that a graduating cosmetology class has come from all four high schools. To speak about the class and introduce her new licensed cosmetologist is Heather Fowler, Cosmetology Academy facilitator.
Thank you. This class of 2023 was the first junior class to begin a new journey, and in two years, they became the first and largest class of licensed graduates from all district high schools. Students in the Cosmetology Academy complete twenty-six credit hours, or one thousand hour equivalent, in the state-approved college-level, career-based curriculum. This program is designed to prepare students for state exams consisting of theory and technical knowledge and skills. To earn their state license, students must complete their hours, pass two intense state exams, and be eligible for high school graduation. We are proud to say these students have earned their state license in cosmetology. Some of these students could not be with us this night, but I still want to honor them at this time. Tatiana Albert. Ally Ayala. Ella Bailey. Miranda Fower. Erica Barokas. Abigail Rodas. Soraya Cervantes. Madeline Cronin. Sadie Heinz. Adriana Henderson. Evelina Higbee. Sarah Ibohurt. Shane Lewis. Jaylene Manalo. Carolina Negaglione Diaz. Carly Rainey. Chloe Sams. Maya Snead. Embrianna Tean.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we have a group of students from Medlin Little School who recently advanced to the Texas Science Olympiad State Competition. This year, seventeen Medlin students across all three grade levels advanced to the state competition. As the name implies, the academic competition consists of a series of individual and team events in the field of science and engineering. Here to speak about the group is Jessica Famaletti, coach of the Science Olympiad Team at Medlin.
Science Olympiad is a STEM competition where students compete in pairs in over eighteen individual events. These events cover a wide range of sciences, from mineralology, epidemiology, and forensics, to building bridges, trebuchets, and self-propelled vehicles. Medlin Science Olympiad Team formed at the beginning of the school year, and they studied, designed, and built deeply. They overcame the obstacle of a very delayed regional tournament and dominated. They placed in sixteen events, winning first place overall team. With only two short weeks to prepare for state tournament, they had a strong showing, placing in the top half of schools and placing individually in two events. Both their performance and character represented Northwest ISD in a very positive manner. These kids have shown grit, mental grit, in every way this year. I'm very proud to introduce to you Siobhan Ashley. Makayla Carr. Maggie Famaletti. Sacha Gupta. Abibari Gashik. Scarlett Kerr. Arjun Manavand. Ishar Raj. DS Neha. And Megan Stewart. Oh, and one more, Michael Wayne. One more. Anya Kestrel. I apologize, we had a couple of kids at the band concert tonight, so.
Congratulations, Siobhan.
Up next, we'll be recognizing our Northwest High School JV Sidekicks Drill Team for recently earning first place overall in the JV field at the Showtime International Grand National Dance Competition, Galveston. Notably, this marks the JV squad's first national title since the team began in 2009. Here to talk about the team is Kevin Lysfield, Executive Director of Fine Arts.
Good evening, Dr. Faust, Dr. Simpson, members of the Board. The Junior Varsity Sidekicks is the only JV dance team in our district. Leila Romeo has directed the team since 2016, as well as founding our Northwest ISD Middle School Dance Team in 2018. This year, the Sidekicks JV Team traveled to the Showtime International Grand Nationals in Galveston back in March, and they were very, very successful. The team took first place in Jazz, Hip-Hop, Palm, Contemporary, first-place, grand champion JV Team, JV Best of the Best, and highest-scoring team for Hip-Hop. Dancer Alana Lockett received an entertainment award for her solo at Nationals as well. Due to their successful contest season, the JV and Varsity Sidekicks were invited to perform in the 2023 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. And there, they will dance with a team of hundreds of dancers from across the nation. Leila Romeo, please come forward. She's the director of the team. JV Sidekicks, please come forward when your name is called. I just ask that everyone hold their applause until all of the names have been called. We're very proud of this team. Eva Almanza, Natalie Vanwelos, Caleb Baldwin, Elizabeth Barker, Riley Barnett, Addison Branham, Emma Brinkley, Katie Calais, Bailey Canales, Savannah Garner-Ratzleff, Eleanor Hensel, Jocelyn Jimenez, Francesca Laludi, Alana Lockett, Zuri Moon, Kaylee Richards, Lizette Valdez, Annalise Wintrouble, Ivy White, Micah White, and Madison Willis. Congratulations to the Northwest High School JV Sidekicks.
Hey, Barry Chalk, come closer if you want to take pictures.
For our next set of recognitions, we'll be honoring student-athletes from two groups: our Byron Nelson Bobcat Girls Soccer Team for advancing to the UIL 6A Regional semifinals, and five students between Byron Nelson and Northwest who represented the district at the UIL State Track and Field Meet. On the soccer front, the girls had a successful season and lost to the eventual state champion in double overtime. On the track front, we had several school records, as well as student-athletes who will be back next year to try and improve on their final places. I'd like to invite Joel Johnson, Executive Director of Athletics, to the podium to speak about these two groups.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight, recognize more student-athletes from Northwest ISD. Byron Nelson Soccer, record of eighteen, four and two, second-place finish in District 46A, defeated Fort Worth High School in my district, excuse me, El Paso Franklin in the area round, then they defeated Keller in the regional quarterfinals, and like Anthony said, they lost in double overtime to the state champion in the regionals semifinals. So, unbelievable season, great group of kids, it's my honor to recognize them tonight. So, I'll call their name, and again, if we can hold the applause until the very end, we'll do one big one for the team. Kate Paulmerton. Emma Jeffers. Presley Whitmire. Malorie Sharon. Sophia Moore. Shelby Erskine. Reyna Hyzer. Jesslyn Reyes. Lucy Oaks. Tono Itessa. Addison Palmer. Laney Waddle. Nadia Ortiz. Ari Vasquez. Zeno Itessa. Taylor Kettler. Rachel Raper. Thea Bunger. Ashlyn Vick. Soraya Hayes. Grace Berry. Tina Clark. Alexis Gonzalez. Kate Reese. Lydia Finkel. Ryland Stone. Our head coach, Scott Burke, varsity assistant, Stephanie Rivera. Congratulations, ladies. Next group we have State Track and Field. So, one of my favorite events to attend at the UIL does, and here's what I tell parents and I tell kids before we ever get down there: It doesn't matter how you finish at the State Track Meet, because you are already at least the ninth best in the entire state in your classification. So, when you think about the thousands of kids that compete track and field across the state, to even make it to the State Track Meet is a huge accomplishment. So, very proud of this group. And we'll start with the Northwest group. I'm going to start with Mackenzie Blue. She was sixth place in the pole vault, and if she looks familiar, you're correct. She's already been called up here this year. She's also a state champion wrestler. I don't think Anaya made it, and we had Anaya Potter, who went in two events. She was sixth place in the high jump and ninth place in the 300-meter hurdles. And one thing to say about Anaya, that was her third consecutive trip to the State Track Meet. So, congratulations to Anaya. Keenan Reel. Keenan was fourth place in the 110-meter hurdles and fourth place in the 300-meter hurdles. Andrew Lookenhouse. Andrew was fourth place in the 800-meter run. Like I said, Anaya's not here, but what I would like to point out, too, is our three seniors, Anaya, Keenan, and Andrew, have all committed to colleges. Keenan will be attending at William Christian University on a track scholarship. Andrew will be going to the University of Tulsa on a track scholarship. So, lots of great things for them coming in the future. Our last one is a Byron Nelson student athlete, and if you kind of follow the trend here, we went fourth, 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 fourth. We were kind of stuck on fourth for a few days, but I'll call up Skylar Brazil. Skylar runs for Byron Nelson, and she competed in the 100 and the 200. So, she competed on Saturday. The first race was the 100, and we had another fourth, which has kind of matched our Friday. And then in the 200, Skylar, which she has on her neck right there, was able to make the medal stand and get third place in the 200 in the 6A girls. So, congratulations to Skylar. One other announcement, or one other group I'd like to recognize, the Byron Nelson coaches are here. Nick Benton, Jason Grenier. Come on in, make your picture taken. And Brady Reeves, the coach at Northwest High School. So, congratulations to our coaches.
And that concludes our recognitions this evening. Parents, if you're here, you don't have to stay. Once the recognitions are done, you're free to leave.
We will now move to public participation on the agenda and non-agenda items. And I have a statement I need to read prior. Public participation is the opportunity for the public to address the Board on any matter on the Board agenda. The Board may place reasonable restraints on the length of presentations, so long as it does not unfairly discriminate among speakers based on viewpoint. People who wish to speak must sign up and complete a request-to-speak form before the meeting begins and identify the agenda item on which they are speaking. and identify the agenda item on which they are speaking. Each presentation is limited to three minutes. Speakers requiring language translation will be limited to six minutes. Speakers should refrain from mentioning by name an employee or student about whom they are complaining. The board may not deliberate or take action on a presentation about an item not on the agenda. Will Nicole Donatelli please step to the podium, state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Nicole Donatelli and I live on Lono Drive in Trophy Club. Good evening. My name is Nicole Donatelli, as I just mentioned. And I'm a volunteer with the Tarrant County Chapter of Citizens Defending Freedom. A number of progressive organizations are attempting to pressure school administrators across the state to broaden the language of Title Nine to include sexual orientation and gender identity. And this undermines federal law and the legislative authority of the United States Congress. The Supreme Court's ruling in Bostock v. Clayton County clearly stated that this was a, this case was a Title Seven issue and did not apply to Title Nine or any other law. Further, a federal district court here in Texas has also affirmed that sexual orientation and gender identity are not protected categories because Title Nine must be read in the original context in which it was drafted in nineteen seventy-two, where sex was understood to be both biological and binary. In the Bostock case, the Supreme Court stated that the people's representatives are the ones who must amend Title Nine. Therefore, only Congress can amend Title Nine. You have been emailing copies of some information and I have paper copies for your convenience as well. You are also, and I urge you to take this information into account as you deliberate further on action on this issue as the year progresses. Thank you. Have a good evening. And can I, where can I leave paper copies? Just over here?
Thank you. We will now move to item seven and minister the oath of office. Ms. Roberts?
If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I see scrolls.
I see scrolls.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Northwest ISD.
Of Northwest ISD.
Board of Trustees, Place Five.
Board of Trustees, Place Five.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and law.
The Constitution and law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So over here.
Congratulations.
If you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Dr. Lillian Rouse.
I Dr. Lillian Rouse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
Duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of Northwest ISD.
Of Northwest ISD.
Board of Trustees, Place Six.
Please sit.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and law.
The Constitution and law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. If you raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I Jennifer Murphy.
I Jennifer Murphy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of Northwest ISD.
Northwest ISD.
Board of Trustees, Place Seven.
Board of Trustees, Place Seven.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect and defend.
Preserve, protect and defend.
The Constitution and law.
The Constitution and law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We will now move to item eight, election of officers for president, vice president and secretary.
Madam President, on behalf of the nominating committee, I'd like to nominate Steve Sprouls as the president of the Northwest ISD Board of Trustees.
We have a motion by Mrs. Cobb and a second by Mr. Schluter to nominate Steve Sprouls as president of the Northwest ISD Board of Trustees. All in favor? Motion carries.
Madam President.
Mrs. Hanfield.
I'd like to make the motion to nominate Mark Schluter as the vice president of the Northwest ISD Board of Trustees.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Hanfield, a second by Mrs. Cobb, to nominate Mark Schluter as the vice president of the Northwest ISD Board of Trustees. All in favor? Motion carries.
Madam President, I would also like to nominate Deanne Hatfield as the secretary of the Northwest ISD Board of Trustees.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Cobb, a second by Mrs. Murphy, to nominate Deanne Hatfield as the secretary of the Northwest ISD Board of Trustees. All in favor? Motion carries. Following the election of officers, we will now just make a decision to either draw for new seats or stay where you are. So how would you like to do this, board? Ready to draw?
I'm good.
You switch?
Yeah.
Even, wanna draw?
I'd like to say thank y'all for nominating me for this position. But I also want to take this time to recognize Dr. Simpson for her leadership these past two and a half, almost three years. So from breaking out of COVID, or from ending COVID to superintendent searches, your leadership has got us through some pretty tricky times these last two and a half years. So thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the organization of the Board of Trustees. And, Mr. Schluter?
Yes. It's gonna be hard for me to say the Mr. President. I move to approve the nominated committee's recommendation for the following. Designation of signatories as president and secretary, vice president as the alternate and authorize the district to continue to use the present check signing plate until a new one can be secured. Dates and times for regular monthly meetings as recommended by administration. Does it make Jennifer Murphy as the delegate and Deanne Hatfield as the alternate to represent the district in the 2023 Tasked Delegates Assembly? Does it make Steve Sprouls as the voting representative from the Board of Trustees to represent the district at the city forward tax increment reinvestment zone number two board meetings? Does it make myself, Marshall, as a voting representative for the Board of Trustees for the Northwest State Central Council of Governments Assembly? Does it make Lillian Rouse as voting representative for the Board of Trustees for the communities and schools? Does it make Judy Combs as the voting representative from the Board of Trustees for the Northwest ISD Foundation? And last but not least, does it make Judy Combs, Steve Sprouls, Deanne Hatfield along with the board, as, along with the board president, as members of the Northwest ISD Safety and Security Committee?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Schluter and a second by Mrs. Cobb to approve the board nominee, nominated committee's recommendation for the following that were read by Mr. Schluter. Any discussions? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a considered agenda.
Mr. President, I would, I first ask, does anyone want to move anything out of the considered agenda? I am sure you know. Mr. President, I move that we approve the considered agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schluter and a second by Dr. Rouse to approve the considered agenda as submitted. All in favor? And motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consider Indiana removed from the considered agenda, which there was none, which brings us next to number twelve, strategic planning summit district goals and priorities. And Dr. Griffin?
Thank you, President Sprouls and board members. I am excited tonight to share with you the journey that we have been on for our strategic planning. We have, we have engaged a wide number of constituents across the district. Some of you have been involved in that as well. And I'm happy to share an update with you and open it up for discussion. As you'll recall, we are currently finishing out our most recent strategic plan, which was developed in 2018. So it has spanned five years for us because last year you renewed it for a following year, for this school year, so that we could spend time this spring developing our next strategic plan. So we have engaged with over ninety stakeholders throughout the district, students, parents, teachers, administrators, and many of you as well. And as always, our student voices were the ones that really rang, rang very loud for us as we were meeting, as well as the voices of our parents, teachers, community business leaders, and our administrators, and you as well. Our summit was facilitated this year by Dr. Jim Visosakis from, he's formerly superintendent in Mansfield. He's now retired and was our facilitator. And he did a phenomenal job guiding us through this whole process. So the large group met over the series of four meetings, but on the screen were the first three meetings that we engaged in. We had seventeen tables of people that I just mentioned to you who met on the evenings of February twentieth, March first and March twenty-eighth. And on the first meeting, we really took a look, an in-depth look at our current district goal one and the priorities related to it. And the first task that we asked each table was to really dig into that strategic goal and to give us feedback on what from that goal should we retain in our next strategic plan? Which pieces and ideas should we refine? Were there any areas that we needed to reject or not need to focus on anymore? And what ideas, what new ideas should we consider as well? We got a lot of really good information, each table, throughout this whole process. Not only did they share information with us either digitally or on chart paper, but then each of the seventeen tables had an opportunity to share with the large group. So we could build a sense of community and shared vision together as a large group. So after we spent a lot of time discussing these four aspects of strategic goal number one, we then focused on literacy, as you can imagine. Literacy was definitely one, and I think it was universal across all of them, that we needed to retain. Some suggestions, maybe some ways to refine it, but it was certainly by far one that was universal of keeping as one of our priorities. So we then asked each table, thinking about that priority, literacy priority in strategic goal one, do we need to be more specific or expand on that priority? How do we know we're making progress and how can we best communicate it? And what do we need to do to get there? So again, a tremendous amount of input was generated and shared. And that concluded meeting number one. When we came back in March, on March first, we started looking at, still under strategic goal number one, we looked at the priorities two and three in our current plan. Our academic progress and college career, military and life readiness. Based on the information that we had gathered in the first activity of meeting one, we just dove into the academic progress priority. That two was one that the committee felt that we needed to continue to focus on in our new strategic plan. So we asked those same guiding questions of each of our tables for our academic progress focus. And then college career, military and life readiness was also an area that the committee believed that we should continue moving forward with. So we again asked those same guiding questions and collected a lot of valuable input on that priority as well. When we came together on March twenty-eighth for our third meeting, we looked at strategic goal two and strategic goal three. So starting with strategic goal two, based on what we heard in that first activity on the first night, we moved from one priority, which we previously had had in our strategic plan, that focused on faculty and staff support. We broadened that to have three areas of priority. Recruiting, valuing and retaining our staff. So we asked each group to think about those three areas and brainstorm ideas on how can we best recruit, value and retain exceptional staff? We, each group shared out their ideas as well. And then we asked them to share, how can we measure it? And what do we need to do to get there? So they were recording all of their thoughts digitally. So we had a digital record of their table discussions. And then we also shared that, their thoughts out as well. We then moved to strategic goal three and shifted the thinking and priorities on this one to engagement, culture and safety. So we then asked the tables, thinking about those three areas of priority, to generate a priority statement. These are new targets for us, if you will, new priorities. So we asked for each table to draft a priority statement for each of those three areas. We provided some thought starters for them as well, just to help them generate conversation at their table. They recorded that and shared out. And then we asked those same guiding questions. How will we know if we're making progress and how can we communicate it? And what do we need to do to get there? So that we are fully engaging our community, our parents, our students and our staff, that we have a positive, healthy culture and safety as a priority as well. So that concluded the first three large meetings. So that concluded the first three large meetings. We then broke into some subcommittees. Smaller groups came together on the days of April 4th, April 6th, April 11th, and April 18th to really take all of this information that we had collected from the large group and to bring some clarity and structure to all of that input that we had collected in those large group meetings. So in the first three meetings, these small committees worked together. Each committee targeted one area. One committee focused on goal number one and those three priorities of literacy, academic progress, and CCMR. Another committee focused on strategic goal two with recruiting, valuing, and retaining staff. And then the third committee focused on strategic goal three and thinking about engagement, culture, and safety. We asked them to craft priority statements using the feedback that we had gotten from the large group, and this was the criteria we challenged them to think about as they were writing their priority statements. We wanted it to articulate a growth mindset for all students. We wanted the priority statements to convey purpose and urgency. We want them to be measurable and quantifiable, and we wanted them to align with the feedback that we had received from the large committee. Each group worked very diligently on crafting priority statements, and it was kind of like a funnel because they had a lot of information from the large committee focused on their goal, and they funneled it into three priority statements. We then came together for a fourth meeting. All three small groups were together, and they engaged in a tuning protocol, giving each group really specific, critical feedback on the priority statements. And then we asked them to develop a strategic goal statement using this criteria: that it creates a sense of urgency, it generates excitement, and it inspires a call to action. And, ooh, there's a big title in there, sorry. Models, oh, I should have an S, models what our community values. So we then came back together with our large committee and shared all this work that the small groups had been engaged in. So at this fourth large meeting on April 20th, each subcommittee shared the work that they had developed to get feedback from the large committee. So one of the groups read and shared the three priority statements for strategic goal one, and those are: our students will annually increase literacy proficiency to reach or exceed grade level standards; our academic progress priority statement: our students will achieve individualized academic goals to reach a year's growth or more in all content areas; and our CCMR: our students will graduate life-ready and prepared for success in career, college, or military service. They then shared three drafts of a goal statement. So knowing this is where we're heading, how do we articulate that into a powerful strategic goal statement? So we presented three different versions that the committee had drafted. I'm going to come back to those in just a minute. The second small group shared the priority statements for strategic goal two: recruit, value, and retain. NISD will have an unwavering commitment to attract and welcome high-quality staff. NISD invests in all staff through a culture of support, development, and empowerment to make a positive impact on the learning community. And NISD retains highly effective staff through meaningful relationships, ongoing support, and professional growth opportunities. This group also presented the large committee with three drafts of a strategic goal statement. The third group shared their priority statements for engagement: we will foster an environment of engagement through collaborative dialogue, partnership opportunities, and partnership opportunities with every member of our community. Culture priority statement: we will model and instill a culture of belonging where all students, staff, families, and community voices are heard and valued. And for safety, we will continuously improve, maintain, and communicate the systems of support to strengthen the physical and emotional well-being of our students, staff, and community. This group went a little rogue, and they shared five draft statements for strategic goal statements. You can see in the middle one, there's two, and in the third picture, there were two options there as well. So we had these hanging all here in the board room after they had shared the drafts, and we gave everyone three dots, and we asked them to put a dot on the goal statement for strategic goal one that they felt best met this criteria that we had shared with the small groups. And so this is what the outcome of that for strategic goal one was. You can see the one in the middle clearly received the most votes for meeting the criteria. Strategic goal two, you can also see the middle poster received the most dots. And we had a tie for strategic goal three. Even when there were some on the line, it still came out to a tie. So you can see below the second and third poster, there was another set of dots and a second vote, and it came out, it was very close. But in the end, we came out with these three goal statements meeting the criteria that was set forth. So we then asked for more feedback, because as we walked around the room, you could hear tables saying, "I do really like this goal statement, but I also wish it said X, Y, Z." So our final activity, we asked each table, now that you see the three that received the most dots, give us feedback on each of those. So on chart paper, they gave us feedback for goal one, two, and three. And then also, we asked for thoughts on the process that we had engaged in. I'll tell you, the feedback on the process was overwhelmingly incredibly positive. So it was just a really good sense of energy throughout the committee each time we met.
Thank you, Director.
Yes.
Dr. Vee did a great job facilitating for us. We got into this, every time a table would report out, we'd do a two clap system, kind of like our awards ceremony the other day, but two claps for every group, and so that was just affirmation for folks' work and their intellectual engagement. In the second meeting, and this wasn't really planned necessarily, but we had this organic contest of who can say the biggest vocabulary words, and it just progressively got more outlandish as the evening went on, but the group had a great time with it. And from the large groups, all four of those meetings, plus the smaller groups, where some of the same people had some additional people, the engagement was incredible. And when our kids spoke, as you mentioned earlier, Dr. Griffin, people would stop and just, again, organically, the whole room would stand up and clap, not stand up, but clap for the students because they were saying the most brilliant and sincere things to help us, you know, guide in this process. So the voices that were at the table and the level of engagement and the intellectual contributions of folks, plus all the fun that we had along the way. Who knew that strategic planning could be so much fun? But setting the vision for the next five years, I mean, the direction, I should say, for the next five years of the district, it was really, you don't see it in all the slides, this is one of those, you have to be there, but I wanted to make sure we said that. And you and Dr. Vee and Dr. Griffin, you guys did an incredible job facilitating that process. So, thank you.
Thank you. So once we got this feedback from the large committee, we went back to work and made some revisions. I didn't even take pictures of those, the times whenever we were working on taking that feedback and revising again. We then came up with, please don't pay attention to the graphic, we have our fabulous Jennifer Beacon is designing a graphic visualization when we had it finalized, but just in its working format right now, this ended up being the final, not really final, because there's been another revision since then, but the almost final revision of the strategic goal and then the subsequent priorities below each of them. I'm not going to read those aloud to you. You've seen those several times in your Friday updates as we have been revising along the way. We then have spent a good part of the month of May getting feedback from different stakeholder groups. And we first met with Faculty Advisory Council at the end of April. We then met with our district leadership team, May 11th, and then our DEIC committee on May 17th. And I'll share some of the feedback that we, or the process that we went through to get feedback and some revisions that we have made. So we first just asked, looking at the three strategic goals, give us feedback. So on strategic goal one, Faculty Advisory Council, 100% of them said, "I am, we are comfortable with strategic goal one and don't have any additional feedback to give." When we took strategic goal one to DLT, we asked a different set of questions, and we also, we got some really good feedback from DLT that focused on strategic goal one, so much so, we revised strategic goal one following DLT. So it did say, "Northwest ISD will invest in personalized learning experiences, growth, and achievement of every student." We then revised it to say, "Northwest ISD will provide personalized learning experiences and cultivate the growth and achievement of every student." DEIC met shortly after this, so we took both of these to DEIC, and we said, "Here's draft one, here's draft two, which do you prefer?" And 100% said they preferred the second version over the first. So then, if we look at strategic goal two, we asked for feedback on strategic goal two, written as, "Northwest ISD will recruit, value, and retain highly effective staff prepared to meet the individual needs of our students and learning community." And we got good feedback from DLT, and also, I just combined Faculty Advisory and DEIC graphics on one slide. We only had, I think, three or four that gave some comments to strategic goal two. Some of those comments were, "I really like that we have the words recruit, value, and retain, I hope we keep those." Some were offering minor edits, and some even providing some strategies. When we looked at those, there didn't surface, the need to revise strategic goal two did not come out of that feedback. And with strategic goal three, again, feedback that we got from DLT and from Faculty Advisory Council and DEIC. We had one or two people from Faculty Advisor from DEIC give some feedback as well. Again, some of it was positive feedback on really making a focus, a safety, a focus for us in this strategic goal. So again, there wasn't a need that surfaced to revise strategic goal three. We then went into the priorities. So on strategic goal one, and this has the original version because that's what we shared with DLT at the time, give us feedback on the three priority statements. And asked the same questions as previous from Faculty Advisory Council. Most of the feedback on these got into strategies. I really think we could, we should consider this when we're looking at literacy, or I really hope that we consider this strategy whenever we get into these priorities. Same with priorities for strategic goal two, really great feedback. And strategic goal three. So there were just some minor edits that were made, some of it format edits as well. And then with both DLT and DEIC, we then invited them to engage in a thought exchange to start generating ideas for strategies that we could start considering for next year once the strategic plan is finalized. So we had, the time I took this screenshot, we had 117 people who participated in the thought exchange. They provided 122 ideas, and there were 3,116 ratings. So you can read an idea, and you can rate it with stars on a scale of one to five. You can see this word cloud, some of the keywords that were coming out in the thoughts that were shared in the thought exchange. So now, the final phase of this is feedback from you. So you will be receiving a link to give us some feedback electronically, similar to what the other groups have done as well. So please be watching for that. And as you're, in the meantime, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. One thing that I intended to mention on one of the first slides, we talked with the large committee about the last time the strategic summit met, five years ago. If you'll recall, many of you were involved at that time, we spent a tremendous amount of time revising our vision and mission statement, and then also made some adjustments to our core beliefs. Since those have only been guiding us for the last five years, because there were some pretty major revisions five years ago, we decided that we would carry those forward for the next five years as our guiding principles and beliefs and vision and mission, and really dive into our goals and priorities this next cycle of strategic plan. So what questions do you have?
I have a question. Strategic planning is very important for everybody, all businesses. My question to you is, there are some people who don't know strategic planning, don't understand strategic planning. So how do we plan to communicate this to that population of people? Because they're going to look at these goals and say, "Well, that's what you're supposed to be doing anyway," right? So what's our plan for that as we move forward and we refine these?
One thing that we are designing, currently designing, in the graphic design of the strategic plan, and what's currently hanging in our buildings and classrooms, is our vision, mission, beliefs, and the strategic goals, but the priorities aren't listed. How are we going to get there aren't listed. Some of the feedback we got that very first meeting was, "Do we really know what some of these words mean collectively as an organization?" So one of the things that we are designing is putting the priorities on that graphic as well, so you can see how we are working towards meeting that strategic goal for each of the three areas.
Great question.
And then we'll work with Anthony and his team to make sure that we are communicating that with our staff. It will be what guides us in our Leadership Academy, whenever our principals and teachers are back next year, and really heavy communication with our staff. Sorry, I have to pass.
No, no, I was just going to add our district effectiveness reports. They should be aligned to our strategic goals and priorities, so you can expect a steady diet of reporting on that throughout the year, each year, as we make progress towards those goals.
That's one reason we wanted feedback from the committee also on how do we measure and how do we communicate that? Because we did hear from the committee, we don't know for sure collectively the progress that we have been making on those goals, so much more intentional in that.
And Dr. Griffin, on the slide right before questions, you have, came back on the strategic plan draft. We seconded go out to again, I'm sorry.
Each and you.
Oh, just us, okay. Okay.
We wanted to give you the final draft, if you will, but there's still an opportunity to make revisions, and so we'd like your, we just wanted to work all the way through the process, through the system, with as many stakeholders as possible and bring it to the board. So this will be on the agenda for June 12th. So you'll see this in the Friday update, this link in our Friday update, and then we'll have time to allow for that input. We'll make some final revisions and then present on June 12th, the final, final verdict that we'll hold ourselves accountable to over the next five years.
I have one question. I think they're great, and I like the format and everything, but how are we going to monitor the progress to see that we are accomplishing these priorities and goals?
We have already started brainstorming, even with the committee, on how do we measure? How do we best measure? And then how do we, if you remember, one of the guiding questions we asked each time is, how do we know that we're making progress and how do we communicate it? So I think that communication piece with, excuse me, with all of you as well as with our community is important. So we are currently working on something that would be visible on our website, that not only just this, but other data points that we have in our district that will help communicate to our community, the many new families that are moving in, whenever they get onto our website, to see the progress that we're making and the work that we're engaged in.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Griffin. Next item on the agenda is notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax.
Good evening, Board. So this, this report is kind of a hard one for me to do because I'm a numbers guy and I like exact. And this makes it very difficult because this is a required number that we must give. And with the way the financing system is working, especially in a legislative year, there's a whole lot of vagueness. But this is required, and we must post this, and we must do it publicly, and then we must do this so that we can adopt a budget. And this is what we do to do a proposed tax rate. So all this notice you will see that we will have this meeting on June 26th to adopt a budget and discuss the proposed tax rate. Remember, we don't get to determine our tax rate on the MNO side. The state tells me that, they don't tell me till August. So there's part of it. And also, we're not getting certified values from the appraisal district until July 25th. So these numbers are as of today, best estimate where we can look at the proposed tax rate. Looking at your maintenance tax, you can see right now it's at .8546, that's what it is, that's what it is current. So there's no change. When you know that old law for House Bill Three doesn't say that it will compress, the compression would be minimal. However, you know that it's been proposed that they can do up to 15 cents over the next planning. So we can always go lower from this rate, but I cannot go higher. So I have to take the worst case scenario, if that makes sense. So that's why it's still .85. On the debt side, you can see it's .4210. It was .4200, that is the tenth of a penny that we talked about on the bond for the increase in the tax payers for affording the bond. The next is comparison of proposed budgets with last year's budgets. Again, very much an estimate, looking at it as of today, that could change tomorrow. But right now, it looks like our maintenance operations budget could increase about 9%. And debt service will be about 7%. You add those all together, the value becomes something about 9.2% together. This next one's where the appraisal numbers are coming in. You can see the value of all property for the preceding year was about 38 billion. Comparing this year says 53 billion. So that shows the increase in appraised value. The appraised value of new property went from 1.6 billion last year to 3 billion of new this year. However, we don't get a tax all of that, you know, there's a lot of exemptions, over 65, homesteads, so forth. So total taxable value of all property preceding year was about 30 billion, 820,000. That's where we based our budget last year. As you can see, current tax year shows 40 billion, 51 million. That's about a $9.2 billion increase. Again, that's comparing certified to preliminary, which I don't feel is apples to apples. So again, that's why I don't like this report. Usually, preliminary is a little high because you have a lot of protests going on right now, and that number usually goes down when we get certified. So I expect it to be closer between seven and eight billion. Right now, it shows 9.2. And then, of course, total taxable property of new property, 1.6 to 2.988. The next line shows bonded indebtedness. That is our current bonded indebtedness principle as of right now. That's $1.3 billion. Of course, you know, we did pass a 2 billion, but we only sell it as needed. And so we've not sold any of that yet, so that number's not going up. Then this is where it gives you the number. You have to do compare last year's rates, this year's rates, how it all works out. So looking at it, you can see last year's rate was the same, .8546, interesting, .42 for a total of 1.27. And then it shows you what your local revenue per street was and your state revenue per street. So you can see it was about 13,000 per local and 699 per state. The next line shows the rate to maintain. This was very critical back when you used to use previous year's values powered House Bill Three in comparing. Today, it's almost, doesn't even work. It doesn't even make sense. You can see that it would say the rate to maintain would be dropping the MNO almost 13 cents on the interest and sinking, it's adding to drop it about 5 cents. And then the local revenue would be about 12,000 and then 433 per state. However, our proposed rate is at .8546, .4210 for interest and sinking. And that shows local revenue per street of 14,414, which would give us a state revenue of 494. The next shows the comparison of proposed levy with last year's levy. I think this is probably the best piece of information in here because it shows the average market value of the residents. Last year, about 419,000. As compared to this year, the average market value is 552,000. That's a $133,000 increase, or about 31.8%. Then talks about the average taxable value, that takes in all the exemptions. The next shows last year's rate versus the $100 of value. Again, you can see that the only thing that went up was a tenth of a penny, now it is. And then it shows the average taxes due. You see, it went from $4,568 for last year on the average value of house to $5,360 on the average value of house. I will say, if for some reason that the legislative deal goes to about compressing the tax rate 15 cents or 7 and 1/2 cents this year, that would lower the tax rate to $1.20. So we would decrease it by 7 and 1/2 cents. And the average taxes on the average resident would still be $5,045, or a $476 increase. So even though we would lower taxes by 7 and 1/2 cents, taxpayer would still see an increase on their taxes by $476. That's just kind of notes on how that works. The last just shows our fund balance. As you can see, maintenance operations shares a $99,904,000 fund balance. I know that sounds like a big number, but understanding that that's 32.9% of our operating budget for four months. State requires that I have a minimum of three months operating. And so we're kind of on the lower end of that, or we're in a good spot, but we're at four months. Typically, you want to be somewhere between four and five months. And the interest and sinking we have in fund balance currently is 70 million. And that is the proposed tax rate and budget meeting. And I will have this published in the paper. Can I ask you a question for you?
So I appreciate the fact that you don't have real numbers here. Is there any kind of statement that you could add to this or the newspaper budget to say pending?
No, ma'am. This is the legal format, that it must be in, nothing I can add. And I do think that's why they have it, is budgeting and proposed tax rate is the worst case scenario. What happens is you have to do it to adopt a budget in June, but you don't adopt the actual tax rate until August. So this is the way we have to protect or make sure we don't go any higher. We can always go lower. It's very confusing for the tax.
I was going to say, so I wonder if through our communications department, is there a way that we could add some explanation to the fact that we're kind of pending what the legislature, legislature does? At least on our website.
Let me interject there. One of the things that we discussed just today and over the last couple of weeks is some short vignettes or videos on school finance one-on-one, because there are a lot of questions about salaries and budgets and so forth. And so over the next couple of weeks, between this week and next week, we're hoping to be able to start producing some quick, minute and a half to two-minute video explanations, even if they're PowerPoints that are voiceover, just low-tech or cartoon-type illustrations of public school finance in Texas. Just so our staff and our community understand that pending legislation, not litigation, pending legislation has a tremendous impact on what we can do with our budgets and with salary and with tax rate. So you didn't mention, Jonathan, the moving from 40,000 homestead exemption to 100,000 homestead exemption, which is proposed, a 5% growth cap. All of these things are in play right now and over these last few days. So what we want to do is allow some of that to get a little more solidified and then share with our community what the implications are.
Will you be able to share that with some of our elected officials and cities and some of our leadership?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Because not everyone always sees the clips that are on our website.
That's, that's a great point, yeah. We can be, that's a good idea to be pretty proactive to share that with our members.
I think it's important for communities to understand kind of the tentative nature of school finance right now.
Okay, yeah, this is a discussion action item.
Mr. President.
Ms. Hatfield.
I made the motion to approve the notice to discuss budget and proposed tax rate as recommended by the administration.
I have a motion by Ms. Hatfield and a second by Mrs. Murphy to approve the notice to discuss budget and proposed tax rate as recommended by the administration. All favor. Mr. Murphy. The next item on the agenda, we move into reports. And the first one being the demographics report.
Yes, I'd like to invite Bob Templeton from Zonda Demographics to give us our Q1 report. Thank you for your patience this evening. We've got a lot on the agenda.
You're welcome. It's always good to see the student awards and the achievements. Well, good evening. I will go with the first quarter report, economic highlights. So to give a bit of time on the housing market, the housing market continues to be kind of headline news with the big changes that we're seeing. From the economic conditions, unemployment rates have moved up just a little bit. That's primarily because the region is seeing tremendous population growth. So the DFW area continues to be one of the fastest-growing regions in the country. In fact, the state of Texas grew about 400,000 people this past year. And DFW and Austin are the two biggest spots where we're seeing the biggest population growth. So the unemployment moved up just a little bit, but it's still relatively low. It's also still very problematic for many industries to fill open positions. So these are still relatively low unemployment rates. Now, I want to touch on the state economic trends, excuse me, the enrollment trends. This is a bar graph that shows total enrollment change in Texas. You'll notice prior to the pandemic, the state's enrollment would grow anywhere from 30,000 to 60,000 kids per year. And then that dark blue bar, when the state's enrollment dropped to 122,000 kids, that was the pandemic's impact. And of course, we really thought we would see a big bounce the following year in the 21, 22 year. It did bounce to 50,000 students of growth, but that's about what we normally grow. So we really didn't see the big bounce. This year, we did see enrollment growth, grow about 92,000 kids. That's one of our biggest years ever. So we did see some of that COVID return drop in the 2021 year. Some of it is the continued population growth coming into Texas. When we look at these two maps, the map on the left is the enrollment change for the previous school year. Again, the darkest green school districts are the school districts that are growing the fastest. The orange and the red are seeing significant enrollment decline. And you'll see, again, this year's map change. The darkest green school districts are in the north part of the DFW region. They're down in the I-35 corridor of Austin, San Antonio. And they're also over in Regions Four and Region Six, which is the Houston region. Now, I have outlined the Northwest School District in blue. These are, this is a five-year enrollment thematic map to show you the five-year patterns. Northwest ISD is the fastest-growing school district in Region 11, not even close on the second, number two spot. And you and Prosper are neck and neck in terms of the five-year growth trends. And you will pass, and you're growing faster than Prosper is growing on an annual basis right now. But the fastest-growing school districts continue to be in the north part of the DFW metroplex. It's Northwest, Denton, Prosper, it's Salina. It's also moving over into the Community School District, a little bit east in Voice City. The majority of the jobs are growing north. So that's the reason why we're seeing the continued enrollment growth being the strongest in the north parts of the metroplex. Now, this is the DFW new home starts and closings graph. This is an annualized number. And you'll notice that the dark kind of purple line and the turquoise line stayed very close together prior to about the third quarter of 2020. So third quarter of 2020, that's when the pandemic caused that separation of starts and closings. The starts accelerated, the closings lagged behind. The reason the closings lagged behind was because it took longer for builders to build homes. It was the supply chain challenges, the shortages of labor. So we started to have this, this inventory build up. And you can see it peaked about the first quarter of 2021. That's when we were up to about 50,000, over 50,000 starts across the DFW metroplex. Of course, at the same time, inflation is going crazy, 40-year-high inflation. So the Fed started raising the interest rates about a year ago. That increase in the interest rates was very gradual over those summer months, which then slowed down the start activity. And then the closings are now catching up. And so you can see this quarter, closings outpaced starts. And we're seeing this with the majority of our school district clients in the DFW metroplex. Now, the multifamily side, this is a graph that's showing multifamily data for the region. The blue bar represents the occupancy rates. The green and the orange lines represent the market and effective rent rates. We peaked in occupancy, the latter part of '21, early part of '22, when we were up over 92% occupied. Now, the reason the occupancy rates have been dropping off is because we've added so many units. We've added 26,482 units as of March 2023. That's an annualized number. So the reason they've gone down, the occupancy, is we've added so many units. And you can see the impact that it's had on the rent rate. So it has softened that rising interest or rent rates and made it somewhat more affordable. I wouldn't say more affordable, but it has softened that escalation of the rate increases. Now, here's the ranking report based on annual closings. Northwest ISD again is in the number one spot. You will stay in the number one spot for several years. That's not going to change. The annualized start rate, you'll notice how it's flipped from a year ago. A year ago, we were starting about 3,500, closing less than 3,000. We've got 2,763 annualized starts, but we're still really strong on the closing number. We have 1,675 homes in inventory. These are new homes that are under construction and some finished vacant new homes. We have 5,254 vacant developed lots. Those are lots that are ready for builders to build on. And you can see the lot supply is going to grow. So the vacant developed lots are, are very strong. We have a very healthy balance of vacant developed lots. We have the highest number of futures in the DFW metroplex. Futures are concept plans, preliminary plans on future phases of developments. And one thing that we've noticed is the developers have not slowed down. So even though the start rates have slowed, the developers are still working at a very strong pace to deliver new lots. Now, part of that could be because their engineering was already in the works, they already had their financing lined up, their permits were approved. So the wheels may have already been in motion for those projects to get underway. It is going to be interesting to see how the builders respond to this high number of lots. We suspect the start rate is going to continue to drop. So just because of the high interest rates, it is very problematic for the younger buyers. It's not as problematic for the relocation buyers that are moving to the region because of the job, seeking jobs. And we do still have a very strong job outlook. Here's the starts and closings by quarter. The first quarter, you can see, it was 549, and that's much lower than we've seen during the last three first quarters. The closing number was good at 655. And again, we've got over 1,600 homes that are in that inventory category, which that's the reason why we really feel like your fall enrollment numbers are going to be very consistent with what you saw this fall, because of that inventory that was already in the pipeline. Now, what's, again, Northwest is in rare company when it comes to this amount of growth spread throughout the school district. You have literally, you have six elementary zones that are building more than 200 homes per year, very strong growth in six elementary zones. You have 11 elementary zones that are building more than 100. So most districts would only have three or four in that category. And you've got six with over 200 and 11 with over 100. So the growth continues all throughout the district. This map really tells the story. These are your current elementary attendance zones. Those green shaded areas are the active subdivisions that are building single-family homes. The yellow subdivisions are the future subdivisions that are in the planning stages. Where there's a red outline, that's indicating that Where there's a red outline, that's indicating that development activity is taking place, earth-moving equipment, streets are being poured. So the developers are very active in those red outline areas. We have 63 actively building subdivisions, 39 future subdivisions. There is groundwork currently underway on 4,260 lots, and that may be a record. Again, the wheels were likely in motion is why the developers are continuing to go at such a brisk pace. It's going to be very interesting to see how the builders respond. This may provide an opportunity for the builders to get some discounts. So we may see some softening in the lot cost because of this high supply. Now, I'm just going to touch on a couple of the highlights. Of course, this is Reunion. This is the large master planned community out on the western side of the school district. It's a total of 5,752 total homes, total future homes. There's 784 vacant developed lots, 45 homes under construction. It's split between two elementary zones, and we've got about 5,000 future lots that have not yet started yet in the Seven Hills portion. Wellington, this is in the Nash Elementary Zone. There's 855 total homes. The groundwork is well underway, and the streets are going in. The Schluter Elementary portion includes about 1,727 homes. Home construction is to start this summer. So we'll likely see new homes going up this summer, which means they'll be likely occupied mid-year of the next school year. The Preserve over near Justin, 637 total homes. The groundwork is well underway. The streets are going in. Home construction again should start this summer in the Preserve. Just some of the highlights on the activity. We do have details on all of your active subdivisions. On the multifamily side, again, we're seeing very strong activity, multifamily. Within Northwest ISD, we've got 14 multifamily projects that are in the planning stages. Those are the turquoise shaded areas, and we've got about 2,650 multifamily units that are under construction in 10 different locations. In that Cox Zone, you'll notice that the Cox label, there's a purple section right under that. That's actually single-family for rent. So it shows up as, our database is multifamily because they'll be rental, but it looks like single-family homes, small single-family homes. It's right there in the Cox Zone. We're seeing about 50 of these projects across our clients. This is a new emerging housing type, and it's the flexibility, the attractiveness, that they are single-family homes. Touch on the charter schools. We are watching charter schools very closely. This is total charter school enrollment that we have separated out from the TEA enrollment data. This year, we've got about 404,000 kids enrolled in charter schools. You can see that number grows about 20,000 to 29,000 per year. This year, the charter enrollment grew about 25,000. This is the breakout of that charter data by region. You'll notice that in Region 11, we had a little bit of growth this year, about 518 was the one-year change in charter enrollment. Region 10 saw a much larger change in the charter enrollment. Region 10 saw growth of about 1,934 students. Now, this is the current charter schools in the DFW region. You can see when we look around Northwest ISD, they're right there on your fringes. It's the Westlake City Charter that's been in operation for a number of years, and then it's the International Leadership down there along 287. Those are the closest charters, right there in and right on the edge of Northwest School District. We've got 250 charter campuses in the DFW region and about 106,000 students in the DFW region attending charters. These are the locations for the charters that are going to be either expanding or opening this next year. You can see there's a pretty good distance from Northwest ISD, so we really don't expect to see a huge increase in the charter school enrollment from Northwest ISD this next year. This is just the details on those charter openings in '23, '24. Now, here's a look at the enrollment projections. We did move the projections just a little bit. Next year's enrollment doesn't change too much, but you will notice that the trend in the '24 through '27 years, we did reduce that number slightly. We think it's wise to be a little conservative while we're in this flux time period with the starts dropping. So this forecast is based on about 2,400 to 2,800 single-family homes per year, still really strong growth. And so it's not, it's just more to be a little bit cautious. It's important to keep things in context, because the reality is, we were doing 50,000 homes a year back in '21, '22. Now, the start rate may be dropping down to that 35,000, 38,000 in the DFW region. That's still really good, and those were still really good numbers back in 2019. So the reality is, it could be getting back to a more normalized number. Now, here's the impact on the campuses. And of course, with your recent bond passage and your facility planning, where you're going to be opening schools, that's really going to change these numbers quite a bit. So we'll be working with the leadership team to kind of start to model some of the impacts of your campus openings. But you'll notice over the next few years, when we show those openings, these yellow cells are going to get pushed when we open new buildings. At the secondary level, you can see it's the Pike Middle School that has the current highest enrollment for their capacity. And we've got the opening of Worthington, the attended zone changes that were made at the high school level. You can see it's Eaton High School that has the largest enrollment, and it's going to get to about 3,363 students in five, four years, and then it could reach about 3,500 students. Of course, again, with your successful bond package that passed, these numbers will also change as we open new buildings. So key takeaways, the single-family start rate is slowing. Right now, it's on about a 2,700 pace. The groundwork is underway on more than 4,250 lots. We've got 2,600 multifamily units under construction, so we are still going to see strong growth. The forecast is based on an annual absorption of single-family homes, between 2,400 and 2,800 homes. We do expect that the district's enrollment is going to be approximately 36,396 students in five years and more than 43,300 students in 10 years. Be happy to answer any questions.
So I hear you saying that we're going from hyper-explosive growth to just hypergrowth?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
There's very few districts in the state that are growing like this. You know, Comal, down in Houston, it would be Lamar Consolidated, and that's it.
Thank you so much for including the information about the charter schools. I appreciate that. Did those charter schools do not include private schools?
That's correct.
And do we have those data?
Private school enrollment is not subject to public information requests, so we can't get the charter school, the private school enrollments. Now, I wonder if that'll change if anything changes.
I was wondering. That was interesting. Thank you.
Well, I know that was a lot of information. If you think of questions, don't hesitate to send them on to Dr. Faust. We'd be happy to respond anytime with your question.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Mr. President, going, you obviously all like to ask about multifamily every time you come up. So that development in the Cox area, the single-family with multifamily?
Yes.
What's the square footage of bedrooms?
You know, we have that data. I don't have it off the top of my head, but we do have the details about the makeup of those homes. We'd be happy to provide that.
Because obviously, even as you said, point one, maybe point...
This will be a little higher than that.
That's what I was kind of curious. What can we expect? Is it going to be the normal point five, point six for a single family?
No.
Or is it even more?
It won't be more. It will be less. But it won't be as low as your traditional multifamily could. We actually did a study of this last summer, and we already had about 15 of these communities that were already existed this last summer. So we ran the GECodes on all 15 of those, and what we discovered was it has all to do with the bedroom mixes. So we had some in Austin that were ones and twos, ones and two bedrooms, and they're very, very low yields. But then we had some that had twos and threes, and that yield did climb up to about point four to point five. But we tend to see yields in that point two to point three, so it's kind of been in the middle. But I can provide the details on the makeup of the units and the estimated rents that we'll see.
Okay, you're correct.
Steve, have you been over there? Have you seen that neighborhood?
It's like little tiny houses. I mean, I can see kids driving, or kids like on their bicycles, just tiny houses like right next to each other. I mean...
Very small yards.
It could be really tricky to predict.
Yeah, it's very small yards. It's the flexibility that the millennials are lacking, and so it really is targeting millennials because of they come to a region, work for a year. They may work, you know, contract-type jobs, so therefore they want the space of an apartment, or not of a house, but they want the little yard for pets, and they want one-car garage to park their one car. So, but it is efficiency, and you're right, it is very, very tiny. You've got one just down the road, 114 as well. So that's actually been, I'll run the GECode on that and send the yields on that one that's already existing.
I was just going to add to you that one of the things that we really appreciate the leadership was on is that Bob runs these quarterly reports. So as the data changes, we make adjustments on a quarterly basis, not on an annual basis. So we appreciate you coming in. And just out of curiosity, when will we get Q2?
Two Qs, unfortunately, is going to be end of July, first of August. So it's right when you're getting ready for the school year, but yes, it'll be first of August will be when those reports are ready.
Thank you again for coming and providing the fourth question.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Mr. President, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
See you July, August time.
Next up, we have the April financial report.
Good evening. On the financial report, we'll look at general fund first. You can see that we've received about 94% of our revenue from the budget. Last year, at this point, we were about 94.9%, so trending really well. I do know some things. We'll still get a little bit of taxes that come in in late. Interest is still coming in, very hot and heavy, so that's good. I do know the state still owes us some money, which I don't get to say very often, so I like that. The cost report finally came in, which was about 2.4 billion, so you'll see that come in, and a few more Andrea costs. So I feel like we're trending in a good direction. On the expense side, I went to kind of look at it. We're at 62.73% of our budget. Last year, at this point, we were 70% of what we actually ended up spending. It's a little skewed because recapture going up so much kind of skews that data a little bit. So I took the recapture number out and then went back and looked at it. It would be about 72%, and we're still about 69%. So we're still trending really well at expenditures as compared to last year. We have three categories where we're above a touch, but everything else is below, where we were last year, so we're really good about expenditures. Okay, looking at food service, trending again, you can see we've got 94% of our revenue. Last year, the 70%. Again, that goes back to the free and reduced, or everyone eats for free last year, so that's why the numbers were skewed. But if you look at our expenses, we're trending about the same, 73% as 73% last year. And right now, we're currently yielding about a $1.4 million surplus after we're in the year in a good spot. If you look, though, we did add a little bit of a deficit on the budget side. That's because, if you remember, we had such a healthy fund balance, we had to spend some of that out. So we're trying to do that, and I know Bobby's been working on that. The last one, the debt service, of course, after the last meeting, I said we'll probably see what's changed in this, and we will. We make our payments in August and in February, and then we receive all of our revenue from taxes. So we received most of our revenue. You can see we have $130 million of the 129 budget. We spent $127. So right now, we're at about $3 million surplus on our debt service for the year. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we got the Student Health Advisory Council Annual Summary Report.
Good evening, Dr. Faust and board members. I'm here to present the annual report for SHAC. Oh, where did it go? There we go. All right. SHAC's role is to assist the district in ensuring local community values are reflected in the district's education instruction. It plays an important role between health and learning, and it reinforces the knowledge and skills needed for a healthy lifestyle. Our SHAC leadership this year, we had Heather Harrison as our chair. She's been a part of SHAC for 11 years, has been in a leadership role for eight of those. She has twin boys who are now sophomores. That picture is not current, at Byron-Welson High School, and she has a background in exercise physiology. Our vice chair this year was Whitney Milson. This is her third year being a part of SHAC and her second year to be in a leadership role. She has a son that is a fourth grader at Cox Elementary, and she works in the medical field. And then our secretary this year was Julie Wright. She's been a part of SHAC for 11 years, has been in a leadership role for three of those, and her daughter is graduating from Northwest High School this year, and she works with Texas Health. We appreciate their leadership, their time they invested, their valuable input this year, and the commitment they showed this year was greatly appreciated. Our SHAC members, as they were approved in the fall, we're thankful for their involvement and grateful to all the parents and the community members who volunteered this year. We had some highlights from our SHAC presentations that we had throughout our meetings. We had Teacher Be Still Program, which is, was created by two former educators, and it's a wellness program designed to work with our PTA to encourage and equip our educators. They provide professional developments that give practical solutions for time management. They help to create a positive campus culture, and they encourage our teachers to continue to make a positive impact on their campuses. We had a representative from Big Brothers, Big Sisters come. They explained the benefits of their mentoring program, talked about their Mentor 2.0 program, which kind of extends that program for those high school kids after they graduate. They also talked about the events and things that they offer throughout our community, and they gave training opportunities for those who wanted to get involved. We had menu review. So we had menu samples that were made by Chef Anthony that were brought in, and they align with our National School Lunch Program that we use for our elementary and our middle schools. Nikki Nice from Aramark, she got up and she spoke on each manual, menu sample, and gave the nutrition facts on those, and then also talked about the allergy restrictions that we have for a number of our students. From there, she opened up for any suggestions or questions that they might have, and provided each of our committee members the opportunity to give their input there. And last, we had Recovery Resource Council come and speak on their program, and this promotes the wellness and recovery relating to alcohol, substance abuse, trauma, and mental health. And they gave an overview on the prevention activities and interventions that they have, both for our youth and our adults. They also talked about the special events that go with the Ribbon Week and other resources that they have throughout our community in the greater DFW area. We had SHAC accomplishments this year. We provided volunteers for packet pickup and support for the reindeer romp. We continued with our CPR training for our sixth graders. We had our Go Red Week and our Kids' Heart Challenge with the American Heart Association. We had our Kids Teaching Kids 21-Day Challenge, the 21-Day Challenge for At Work, our Walkabout Wednesday at the OLC, and the menu review from Aramark. We had our 15th Annual Reindeer Romp. We had 1,600 participants. With that, we raised almost $8,500 for our NISD PE programs. So we're grateful for all those. And we were able to do the one-mile fun run, but of course, we were unable to do the 5K due to the lightning and the take shelter alerts that came through. So unfortunately, we weren't able to get that done. But we are scheduled for December 9th of 2023, so hopefully the weather holds for us there. But we're thankful for the filled house. We're continuing to put this on for us. We had our Kids' Heart Challenge that goes... Uh, we had our Kids' Heart Challenge that goes along with, uh, American Heart Association. And it's not only a fundraiser that promotes heart health now, it is a program that focuses on whole body health. And with that, it provides lessons, tools and activities that support the mental and the physical wellbeing of our students, our families and our staff. So we had, um, sixteen schools participate in that. And with the Go Red Week, uh, NISD was able to, um, raise money, um, almost a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we were, uh, definitely very generous in that. And, um, because American Heart Association was so grateful, in turn, they, um, partnered with U S Games, um, and gave this certificate to those schools where they can purchase, um, more PE equipment for their campuses. So we appreciated that as well. Uh, our Kids Teaching Kids Twenty-One Day Challenge that we have, I want y'all to see the, um, page that you see up there is part of the, um, digital recipe book that Medical City puts out. And it's not only DFW area, it's, uh, now in San Antonio, Austin, Houston. So it's pretty much throughout, um, the big metropuses in our state. So with that, that is our Northwest ISD page that was in the digital recipe book. And, uh, you'll see there that our healthy snack, uh, recipe was created by our culinary students at Byron Nelson High School. That picture that you see there, when you click on it, is the video, instructional video, um, that was created by two of our Cox students, um, that showed how to do the recipe and then of course, enjoying the finished product at the end. Um, down at the bottom, you see that QR code. Uh, when they're putting all this together, they assign each district, um, a different activity or, um, wellness, um, topic that aligns with our elementary PE teaks. Ours was volleying, so, um, with that, when you, when you go to that QR, it pops up a video of, uh, two of our Northwest High School varsity volleyball players demonstrating, uh, partner passing and different individual skills with, uh, volleyball. And the video was shot, edited and narrated by our, um, students in the AMAT Academy. So that page right there pretty much, uh, spotlights, um, our students' talents throughout the Northwest ISD district. So that was, that was a pretty cool page. But, um, our Kids Teaching Kids with Medical City, we ended up with, uh, twenty-one hundred students that participated at our elementary level, um, focusing on, um, eating healthy snacks. And at the end of those twenty-one days, we hope that they've, uh, created a habit there. And those parents at the end, they take a survey and, uh, what, uh, Medical City sends us at the end, uh, the result for our Northwest, um, students and parents was that we had, um, their thirty percent reduction in consuming chips, twenty-seven percent reduction in, um, eating cookies and candy, ten percent reduction in drinking sodas and energy drinks, and then a ten percent increase in, uh, fruits and vegetables. So hopefully some habits were created with that. Um, and then our employee wellness, along with the Twenty-One Day Challenge that they do for our students. Um, last year, actually, Medical City started it for, um, our employees as well. So the first year, we had seventy-five employees that participated and here in the second year, we had two hundred and fifty. And, um, again, they did a survey at the end. And of those that completed the survey, uh, forty-eight percent experienced increased energy levels, thirty-two percent experienced, uh, increase in productivity, and ten percent of those increased their intake of fruits and vegetables. So that was, uh, great feedback there. Uh, with that, we had, um, a Walkabout Wednesday at the OLC. That was spearheaded by Rebecca Basely. We did two of those in the spring, one in April, uh, one in May, as you can see there. And we got great feedback from those who participated and we hope to increase that next year in the fall. Do a couple in the fall in this, um, beautiful weather then, and then also continue it in the spring. So it was a great time for our faculty and staff to enjoy the facility, get outside and, uh, be active. So I appreciate the work that Shack did this year and I look forward to the opportunities and progress that we make, um, next year. So thank you for allowing me to present. Do you mind having any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. The, on the Kids Teaching Kids.
Yes, sir.
With the recipes, is that something that's publicized somewhere?
Um, yes, I can send you the link, but, um, the other day I couldn't find it. So I just Googled it and you were able to pull that out and look through all the different, um, recipes in the whole digital book.
Okay. Yeah, something like that, that we found to share on our Facebook, trusty Facebook pages.
Okay.
So something like that, I don't know if it's, can be done through.
Sure, I can send it to you.
Something like that, communications is where we could share with the community, so.
And we'll follow up on that. When was that?
It was, um, let's see, we normally did it, there's a sign up for a two week period in mid-September. And so normally it takes up most of October.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, we can absolutely post that, so.
Yeah, because we gotta phone with that, just try to get people to make it home and get some ideas and whatnot. But on the, the Walkabout Wednesdays, is that something that's gonna continue in the fall?
Yes, sir, that's our goal. Um, uh, we, really Rebecca thought of it, it was a great idea, um, in late March. So it was kind of last minute putting it together, but, um, anyway, we got great feedback in our last meeting on that. And those that went out there, um, had, um, positive experience. So we're hoping to add some of those in the fall.
You don't possibly get information. Because you give us a good, good chance of one of the age teachers. I don't know if it's allowed, I'll see on something like that.
I'm not sure on that one. That's an outdoor Amy question, I think.
I can follow up on that. Coach Schilling, thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And next up, we got Facilities Planning and Construction Month Reports.
Mr. Osborne, our world traveler is back from Italy.
I am back. I just asked Sarah if she wanted to do this report since I heard she did such great job last year, but she declined. So I guess she'll just stuck with me this month. So, um, Dr. Boust, F O U S T, uh, for those who don't know how to spell it, um, and, uh, board.
Okay, uh, this is important because Mr. McCleod's not here to defend himself.
Uh, I apologize, I shouldn't have taken a cheap shot of my boss always out there. So I'll move on, I'll move on. Uh, here is the, uh, list of projects we currently have under construction. Uh, we are in the homestretch on Worthington, it's really coming together nicely. Uh, those areas that you see, uh, missing the saw in the grass have now been installed. So, uh, as we go around this, uh, the outside of the building, uh, these images are a couple of weeks old. So we've made a lot of really good progress, all the landscapes in. Uh, so the outside of the building is really starting to take some really good shape. You can see the, uh, bus canopy that's been installed there, uh, on the back side. And the inside is really, really coming along nicely. Uh, just a few more items, uh, here and there to take care of, but, uh, we have ensured, uh, Ms. Childress that we're gonna get her in and get her ready for the start of school. I would say the biggest area that we're, um, lacking in right now is that upper left picture that you see. That's the library, that's the next area focused. They just installed the rest of the ceiling in that area, which was really holding them up from tackling this area. And then, uh, some of the, um, athletics area. Um, this is the competition gym, which is in really good shape. Uh, but the, uh, storm shelter gym is the last one for the flooring to go down. So we're, we're probably about a month out from, uh, Worthington being complete, but we have started moving in furniture and, uh, we will be ready for the start of school there. Uh, Carter Elementary is also making really good progress. Uh, a couple of the exterior photos here, you can see the playgrounds in. This is the earliest we've ever had any of the playgrounds in and any of the elementary since I've been here, so that's pretty exciting. Um, Daniel, uh, coming in right behind, a little farther behind on the, uh, site area. That was, uh, due to, uh, partly the Hillwood not having the roads in around this area. So it really constricted what we could do with the site. Uh, but now that the surrounding roads are in, we're able to, uh, tie into those and, uh, start to focus on the site. So the inside of the buildings is really pretty good shape. The classroom, uh, wings are nearly completely done. They're just really missing their monitor, uh, and, uh, obviously the furniture, we're starting to move the furniture in to Daniel, uh, beginning of July. So, uh, in about another month or so, uh, Carter starts its furniture movement next week. Uh, Hatfield's probably the farthest of the four elementaries behind. I did meet with the, uh, leadership, uh, president of the contractor. And, uh, he has ensured us that he will get us in, uh, before the start of school. It will still be coming in hot and we have told, uh, Mr. Mayor that we walk with him, uh, and all the principals once a month just so that they know where we're at. Uh, so thankfully, they've got a building to, to hang out in over the summer until we're ready to move them in, but we will get them in as well. And then, uh, Seven Hills is, is really making, uh, good progress as well. Uh, we've got the, uh, the graduate walk, uh, on Wednesday, I believe, this week. And we have some commemorative bricks that we're gonna be able to give some of those seniors from the existing school that we've already removed and have a little commemorative plaque put on there. That was, uh, the Slackburn's idea, and so we're pretty excited to be able to do that for them as well. Um, Northwest High School, uh, is making great progress on the CTE addition, which you see here. So this will be the new front entry of the CTE wing on the east side of the building. Uh, it's, uh, completely sheathed, uh, at this point. So if any of you drove by at this, uh, drove by it this evening, you'll see that this is all enclosed now. The window frames are in, we've tempered those windows in and we've actually started putting sheet rock on the inside. So, uh, before I left, uh, last month, I was a little nervous about this project, but, uh, our contractor, North Star Builders, has done a great job over the last month. And, uh, we have ensured, uh, the campus that they will be in this, uh, addition by the fall. Uh, so there's a picture, uh, of the interior. Again, we've already started sheet rocking on the inside and, uh, Ms. Jackson, uh, wanted me to include this one because she thought it was really cute how, uh, Dr. Johnson back there was, uh, photobombing us. And so I told her I didn't include that one. Um, here's a, uh, interior of some of the remodel area. So the two hundred hallway and the two thousand above it, uh, are being remodeled. Uh, two hundred hallway, which you're seeing here, uh, generic classrooms. And the two thousand hallway above it is gonna be some new science rooms. So, uh, we walked some of the science staff through there and just the excitement that they have for what they were seeing was, uh, was really neat to see. And then the upper left picture you're seeing is the, uh, what will become the new art room, uh, classrooms and the, uh, exterior courtyard that will be at the south end of what will become the new library. Uh, Pike, I cannot be more excited about the progress we're making out of Pike. I think we are weeks and weeks ahead of schedule. I'm not gonna let it just jinx myself, but, uh, we have poured all the, uh, first floor concrete slabs. So that's a great milestone for us to be this far along at this point. Uh, steel will start on the second classroom wing here in another week or so. Uh, all the gym, uh, CMU and, uh, ICF for the storm shelter have been topped out. So we'll start hanging the, uh, joists for those areas. Uh, we've already started roofing the, over the admin area and the, uh, first classroom wing. And so, uh, really pleased with where we're at on that. And then there's a shot of the back, so we've already poured the concrete that you see, uh, that's in the yellow vapor barrier and then some of the gray beans, that's all, uh, underneath the concrete now. Uh, pre-K additions also making really good progress. So here's, uh, an exterior shot of love and one of the interior shots. So this is about where all of the, um, six out of the seven, uh, additions are at. Uh, Hughes Elementary is the, the furthest one behind. Uh, it's probably a couple, three weeks behind the rest, uh, but we are already starting to put brick, uh, on the exterior at Cinder Ranch. Uh, and then there's another shot of Granger. The shared, uh, restroom between these two classrooms, uh, has already got its tile on and even some of the fixtures. So I think we're probably gonna wrap these up a couple of weeks ahead of schedule. So we should be moving furniture into all the, uh, pre-K classroom additions around mid-June. Uh, so I know that'll make, uh, Dr. Esten knows, pretty happy that, uh, we'll be ready for all those kids that she registered. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Friday, we walked, some of us walked Hatfield for the last time. And I just happened to notice that a lot of the furniture looks fairly new. And how are we going to use some of the furniture from the schools that we're renovating for something else?
Uh, Ms. Cobb, that's a great question. I will defer that to my coworker, Sarah Stewart, since she handles our furniture.
Good evening. Um, a few years ago, we replaced Hatfield and Seven Hills, Justin and, um, Seven Hills, Seven Hills Prairie. And so we're gonna combine Hatfield and, and Seven Hills furniture and keep it on, on hold. So where we'll replace the two other campuses, we'll use all of that furniture for, over the whole campus. Thank you.
Great answer. Any other questions that I can defer to Sarah?
I will have a more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we completed all the playgrounds that we were gonna?
Uh, we have not. So, uh, the, there, I, I believe are two of the pre-Ks, um, uh, those elementary schools that we have not started yet. We, we were thinking we were gonna have to wait until, uh, after the school had started in the fall because we wanted to focus on the new elementaries to make sure that those were in. But because we're making such good progress on getting those installed, we should be able to start on the two. And forgive me, I cannot remember the two, uh, that we haven't started on yet. But, uh, it looks like we'll be starting on those, uh, late July, early August. So there, we might be getting pushed up against it for the start of school. But, uh, right now, our schedule shows that the beginning of September, all the playgrounds, uh, across the district will have been updated. You're very welcome. Any others? A lot of questions tonight, I love it. Good, thank you. Very good, thank you.
Okay, that brings us up to the next item on the agenda, Board Presidents' Reports. And, uh, just an announcement here, I've got the TESVS L I Conference is June twenty-first to twenty-fourth on me. And that's all of that. And next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cobb.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things, uh, uh, this Friday, uh, we have Steel Early College High School graduation, five P M. At Byron Nelson, uh, that's because of the, uh, construction projects at, uh, High School. So, uh, just to make sure we all have that at five P M. this Friday. And of course, next Tuesday, um, are joining us at ten, two and six P M. for our graduations. Uh, we're excited about, uh, seeing the class of twenty twenty-three walk the stage for our four schools. Uh, also, uh, just a quick legislative update. Uh, last Thursday, we sent out an email to, uh, all staff and then we know the staff shared that with our community as well. Uh, we weren't the only district in, in the area across the state that were pretty, um, excited by the idea, the concept that there wouldn't be any legislation that moved forward on Texas Public School Finance, any additional revenue since we've been experiencing record inflation. Uh, and yet we haven't had any additional funding since two thousand nineteen. And apparently, uh, our legislators and Lieutenant Governor and Governor's Office, um, got the message because somehow, uh, on Sunday evening, a hundred and thirty page, uh, committee substitute for House Bill one hundred that was not even on the calendar, that was scheduled, uh, to be heard, uh, was submitted, uh, last night. And this morning at eight-thirty, they had, uh, the Senate Education Committee note for the record that the Senate's committee is not called the Senate Public Education Committee like in the House. It's just the Education Committee. They changed the name of that committee recently. Uh, but that Education Committee, uh, heard the committee substitute with the hundred and thirty pages. Essentially, what they did with House Bill one hundred was they took Senate Bill eight, um, and nine, Teachers Rights Bill and vouchers, and included them as amendments that the Senate substitute for House Bill one hundred, they, they have these things that have nothing to do with public school funding. They, they added those as amendments, um, to House Bill one hundred and their committee substitute. They also added the open enrollment, uh, which was Senate Bill four eighteen. They basically took a bunch of different legislation that did not move in the House and they made them amendments to the House's bill on public school finance and made this omnibus, uh, House Bill one hundred something completely different than what it was before. So we don't know what's gonna happen next, if it'll even be heard in the House. Um, if it, if it is and it's voted out, then, uh, most likely it's, it will be, you know, sent to conference committee where they can decide whether or not they, uh, wanna push that bill forward. But, um, as, the way I would describe the committee substitute for the Senate for House Bill one hundred, it is a non-starter and I would be very, very surprised if it moved forward. So really, we don't have anything substantive with public school funding right now. And that doesn't mean that, um, that the legislature through House Bill one or Senate Bill one could make changes to the basic allotment. According to the Equity Center, um, in the appropriations bills, which they are still going to conference committee on, uh, they could make changes, uh, and, and add to the basic allotment. So I didn't mention the, the Senate substitute for, um, House Bill one. We were fussing about ninety dollars in this first year in the buy-in and a hundred and forty. first year in the buy-in, and one hundred and forty total, not being near enough to address inflation. The Senate substitute reduced it, ninety dollars down to fifty dollars. So, an additional slap in the face for Texas Public Schools and teachers and faculty members that would like to get raises. So, all that to say, we will continue to watch this legislative session over the next few days. There's still time for things to happen. Most likely, it will happen in conference committee, and if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Scott, I don't know where you are, but if it, if it happens in, if it happens in the conference committee, it has to happen by Monday. Is that correct? The Senate Die or whatever it's called, it has to happen by then. So, if there's anything that comes out of this legislative session that's beneficial to public school funding and our ability to address our budget and take care of our staff, it's gonna be most likely through conference committee. So, we'll continue to watch this week as, as things unfold, but we were a little bit concerned about that. Two more bills of note. The House's School Safety Bill was changed substantially from, I think it was Senate Bill Eleven, where they had a hundred dollars in ADA so that we could fund a mandate for armed security on every single campus, which would include every elementary. Essentially, they moved, they removed the hundred dollars and knocked it down to ten dollars, an ADA plus a fifteen-thousand-dollar base, but they also removed the legislative requirement that we have armed security. So, they're not giving us funding for it, and they're not requiring us to have armed security on every elementary, but we believe that the original version of House Bill Three, which is Senate committee, we expect them to push it out, it's gonna go to conference committee for a final decision there. And then finally, Senate Bill Three, which we also expect to go to conference committee, and somehow, we've got to have tax compression addressed. They earmarked a tremendous amount of money, the appropriations bills, somewhere upwards of twenty-one billion dollars to address tax compression. Mr. Stusick mentioned fifteen cents is kind of the target, moving the home set extension from forty thousand to a hundred thousand and possibly capping growth to five percent. I, I don't know if all of those happen, but whatever happens is most likely gonna happen out of conference committee. So, it'll be very interesting to see. And again, I believe when they write the ADA legislative session down in the history books, there's a good chance that it has a, not a gold star, more of a red or a black star, but could possibly be one of the first worst legislative sessions in the history of Republican in Texas. So, it just has not gone the way we hoped or expected by any stretch of the imagination, and we just can't wait to see how it turns out, because we really wanna have sufficient budget to be able to take care of our staff. Any, any questions? I'm sorry to end the meeting on dim and gloom, but it is, it is reality, and again, we'll keep you updated as we watch the developments this week. Thank you, guys.